... agency governing board meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to please take role of the board.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Shoemaker?
She's close.
Yep, she's right behind me. Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
We need a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Voice.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? The agenda is approved. Item three is approving the annual agency plan for the fiscal year beginning July 1st of 2022 to include the 2022 capital improvement grant, the public housing admissions and continued occupancy policy, the family self-sufficiency action plan, and Section 8 Housing Choice voucher administrative plan for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Board communication number 22-150.
There's no discussion, Your Honor. I'll move item three.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment? Hearing none. Ask to have a roll. Well, I guess we can do it on our voting box.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We sit adjourned.
There's something I need to look at. What was the amendment? Do you guys know?
What was the amendment in 40?
Is Jonathan Gano, Jonathan?
Here.
You want to come on up? You're dressed so nicely. I can't. We have something that we're very proud of that I'm going to ask Jonathan, can I go over? We've got the American Public Works Association accreditation, and Jonathan, can you kind of bring us up to date on what's going on?
Happy to. Mayor, Members of Council, ladies and gentlemen of the public, I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Joe Johnson from the American Public Works Association, the Regional Director for the states of the Central Midwest here. Here to present on behalf of the American Public Works Association notice of accreditation that the City of Des Moines Public Works Department and its 406 men and women have earned accreditation as one of the, fully completed all of the requirements to satisfy the highest standards of management in the industry. So I'll ask Joe to come up. Also joining him and serving as plaque bearer is Deputy Public Works Director Adam Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today, to be able to present this accreditation to your Public Works Department. Kind of real quick, prepared speech, I guess, lack of better terms, to go through real quick. So my name is Joe Johnson. I'm the Regional Director for the National Board of APWA, and it gives a great honor for me to be here today to be able to present this. This little bit background on myself, I'm a retired Public Works Director, was on the public side for 30 years, serving two public agencies, currently work for an engineering firm, helping public agencies with their public infrastructure. So again, I'm honored here to join you this evening to celebrate the outstanding accreditation achievement of your Public Works Department and their leadership, Jonathan Gano, and also want to recognize Adam Smith for his, he was a manager to help move this process forward. He kind of dotted the i's, crossed the t, bearing all the work to get this thing done and to keep it moving forward. So Adam, thank you for your dedication in moving this forward. Accreditation is a mark of professionalism, indicating a public works agency has made the commitment to continuous improvement in the delivery of public work, operation, and services in the community it serves. Accreditation recognizes an agency's policies, procedures, and practices which have been evaluated by engineering public work professionals by comparing them against internationally recognized management practices appropriate for the specific agencies. Especially during this time, during the pandemic, to be able to do this kind of in a virtual mode is outstanding, and it's a feather in the city's cap to be able to have this done. Some of the benefits to the agency and the city of Des Moines include its increased efficiency in their operations, improved processing, succession planning, professional recognition, continuous improvement, and by attaining accreditation, it also improves trust and accountability of the city and reflects the public works agency is well managed and operates efficiently. So during the January virtual evaluation, there were 361 practices that were reviewed and found to be in compliance. There are also two model practices recognized with outstanding contribution to the public works operation, and those are the human resource management orientation, specifically the use of mentoring program for new employees, and then park grounds forestry, landscape management, master plan or reforestation. The Urban Forest Master Plan webpage is an excellent example to provide information to the public, along with professional video. So these two practices will be used for other agencies as they move through their accreditation. So on January 31st, 2021, the APWA Accreditation Council awarded full accreditation status to the Department of Public Works. As on behalf of the American Public Works Association, the Board of Directors, it is my pleasure to award this accreditation plaque and recognition of the hard work and dedication of these public work professionals. So just a little background, there are 172 agencies currently accredited within the United States and Canada. The City of Des Moines is three, one of three agencies within Iowa that are accredited. You are to be congratulated and commended for the job well done, and thank you for this opportunity, the opportunity to be here to present this award to you and you and your public work agencies and to the city. Thank you so much.
You have a pause for a picture.
Yep.
We don't get given this kind of an output. Thank you.
Thank you.
Every single year, quite frankly, we get hundreds of, almost 200,000 calls for public service and public safety, and we have our telecommunicators who answer those calls, and I'm going to ask Brad Buttons to come up and talk to us about what's going on, and then we've got a quick proclamation for all those folks that are working with us to try to sort out best solutions for some tough situations. Brett?
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, again, my name is Brad Button. I'm the Communications Administrator for the City of Des Moines Emergency Communication Center. I'm honored today to bring a few of our dispatchers with us for this proclamation. The Des Moines Emergency Communications Center is staffed by 39 public safety dispatchers. Together, they've got a combined 422 years of service to the City of Des Moines. Every day, these men and women answer the call of our citizens in emergency situations and provide dispatching services to our police, fire, animal control, and mobile crisis units. Sometimes it's just for information, and other times it's life and death situations. So regardless of the call or the situation of the call, they're there 24 hours a day to provide a resolution to the caller's needs. So who are these unseen heroes? They're not the uniform or the flashing red and blue lights that you think of when you hear the term first responder. These professionals are the calm voice on the phone providing CPR instructions to the caller while they're trying to save the life of a loved one. They're a voice, they're the voice providing detailed instructions and descriptions of the, to the police officers of the shooting suspect. They're the voice on the radio instructing firefighters to evacuate the crumbling building. They continuously provide comfort to those in need and coordinate emergency responses throughout the city. No one sees them do their work, but they're the, but they are the beginning and the end of every emergency response. In 2021, those 39 dispatchers processed over 484,000 phone calls. They dispatched over 197,000 law enforcement events and over 31,000 fire and medical events. Many of those, they provided lifesaving instructions over the phone. In 2021, the City of Des Moines Public Safety Department's heard the public's desire for more mental health services, so I'm proud to say today that our Communication Center will be the heart of this effort. In the next few weeks, we will be the first Communication Center in Iowa to place a mental health professional in our 911 center to work along with the dispatchers. Our dispatchers will be an important part of this new diversion initiative by identifying 911 callers in a mental health crisis and connecting them directly with the mental health services at the time of the call, thus diverting these calls that would have traditionally been a police or fire response. So the next time you need emergency services, rest assured, these dedicated men and women will be there to answer that call. Mr. Mayor? Brought a few of our dispatchers.
Why don't we have them all come up if they don't mind?
Come on, guys.
I know they'd rather be on the phone, but you know, let's bring them up and...
Normally, they don't like to be in the public.
I know. I know. As Brad pointed out, emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, medical, and emergency mental health services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of first responders is critical, and with those first responders being dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from the City of Des Moines Emergency Communications Center Public Safety Telecommunicators. And whereas at the first contact callers, when they have called 911 with emergency, public safety telecommunications provide callers with lifesaving instructions and dispatch the appropriate resources to meet their needs. And whereas public safety telecommunications have contributed substantially to the prevention of crime, protection of property, preservation of life, and excellent treatment of patients. And whereas the City of Des Moines joins the national recognition of public safety telecommunications who exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism in the performance of their duties. Now, therefore, I, the Mayor of the City of Des Moines, on behalf of our City Council and the residents of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th to the 17th, 2022, is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and I call upon our residents of Des Moines to honor the telecommunications whose diligence and professionalism keep the City of Des Moines residents and visitors safe. Let's give them all a hand for the great work. We'll get started with our meeting in a minute. Let's go ahead and get started with our April 4th Des Moines City Council meeting. I'll ask the clerk to please take role.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, the item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 32. And note, these items are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion, unless pursuant to a council rules, council request, an item to be removed. This evening, item 30 was withdrawn. The executed agreement was not received in the regular items, agendas 33 to 42. There was an ordinance amended on 40, and 42M was withdrawn. Diana Hamill is unable to speak this evening. So other than that...
Move.
I'll second the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. On item five, I am voting no. Ask everybody to vote.
Do we just vote?
We're just waiting. There we go.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Moved item 33. These are, this evening are hearing items. Just for everybody's knowledge, the hearings this evening, we have five zoning items, 34 to 38. We also have one vacation hearing. As a reminder, for the zoning items only, which are items 34 to 38, we will hear from the parties in interest first and then the general public. The parties in interest for the zoning items include only the applicant for the rezoning and those living within the 250 feet of the property to be rezoned, to whom the city has sent notices. After all the parties in interest have communicated, we will open to any member of the public for germane comment to aid in recognizing the parties in interest who may speak. On the zoning items, I will ask that everyone else not step to the microphone unless you are one of either the applicant or within that 250 feet and receive that mail notice. Anyone who approaches the mic before that time will be compared with a list, and if you're not on the list, will be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting and will be required to leave the building. So I just ask everybody, please wait until I call the general public for the zoning items, or you will not be called on for the remainder of the meeting and will be, again, required to leave. After all the parties in interest have been called upon, general public comments, and not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes, will be called upon for germane public comment unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make the germane public comments. And also, because the hearing number 38 is a continued hearing from our last meeting, we would ask that all comments relate only to the new conditions that have been agreed to by the applicant. Repeating comments from the continued hearing will be considered repetitive and non-german. For the other hearings this evening, any interested party may make germane comments. Again, not to exceed that one minute to a maximum of five minutes per hearing unless the hearing is ended sooner. And I think we can get started. Our first item this evening is item 33. Item 33 is on the vacation of portions of East 41st Street, East 41st Street Court, East 40th Court, Four Mile Drive, East 40th Street, Hull Avenue, and Colfax Avenue, right away located in the lower Four Mile Creek floodplain, and conveyance to Polk County Conservation Board for the Four Mile Creek Greenway Project A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Again, we'll go ahead and open it up and ask for germane public comments, again, one per person. Anybody want to speak on item 33? Would you like to hand her the mic? Turn it on, yeah.
My name is Heather Armstrong. I live in Ward Two. My address is 3728 Hubble Avenue. My concern about that is his dad. It comes to where I used to live in the Chicago region. It used to, River Road, and there was this like one camp drive. It always flooded. Every time it rained, it flooded. It's something like this one street road that's like in suburb of Chicago called the Plains, and it always flooded. And also too, like with River Road, that street always flooded when we had heavy rains. So this is a concern issue. Then we need to fix the floodplain.
All right. Any other comment? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Yes, I'll move item 33A, and I will pursue it to rule 42. I would like to waive the second and third reading.
I'll second that.
42A.
So just for clarification purposes, this is a situation where we are conveying this to Polk County to allow more, it was in the floodplain, and so now we're conveying land to Polk County to be managed as floodplain? Yes?
It'll be a lineal park.
Okay. So this is a...
All the houses have been removed. The streets are now being removed. It'll be a Polk County park that will be a lineal park, which is a very good thing to have in our city.
All right. Voting in progress.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
34 is on a request from Home Investments Six LLC. Danny Hagan is the officer to rezone 740 18th Street from NX 2A Neighborhood Mix to Limited MX 1 Mixed Use to allow the use of the existing building as a restaurant, brewery, and a private office space. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Brandon A. Foldus, Home Investments Six LLC, requires six votes. First, we'll ask if the applicant or any parties in interest are here.
My name is Danny Hagan, so I'm the officer here requesting, and Brandon Foldus is a managing member of our, he's one of my business partners. So the requested change here allows for neighborhood scale commercial use, and so it's an existing commercial building. We undergoing a large renovation with the idea of taking what used to be a commercial building back in 1919 when it was built. It's been vacant for the last 30-plus years, dilapidated and blight the neighborhood, and so fixing it back up, bringing the commercial energy back to that street, which is reflective of the neighborhood, and with the intent of increasing security, increasing safety in that neighborhood, and really activating that street front level. Went through a series of neighborhood meetings and met with the association, starting when we first acquired the property, and then neighborhood meetings leading up to this. Planning and zoning last month with a request, and a few of the items that were brought up were the scale of the space, and so one item that we've allowed for restrictions on is no larger than 1,600 square feet of dining area, and so very reasonable. We think that's much larger even than where that scale will come in. And then operating hours to ensure that neighborhood, public safety, I really want to emphasize that, you know, the restaurant portion of this and having it be a space where people in the neighborhood, bicyclists are approaching the area and using the space itself, with parking on the third item. So we see that, you know, parking on 18th, but largely bringing parking to center and continuing to activate parking on that road to help bring down increased density there to reduce, you know, speeding cars going through that area. We're reducing parking stalls on the rear of the building as well to reduce alley traffic coming through that space as well. So excited about the project. Thanks for hearing it this evening.
Any other parties in interest? Someone live within that 250 feet and received notice? Seeing none, are there any individuals for germane comments from the general public? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I will happily move item 34, 34A, and 34B. This is a great project. I appreciate the approach that Danny and his team have taken. I've heard from folks in the neighborhood who were happy about the outreach and the responsiveness in terms of working, working to address neighborhood concerns. I think this will be a great addition and hopefully a model for the type of commercial spaces, which we have a number throughout our community that we can continue to add and integrate effectively in neighborhoods where they were existing before and maybe even in cases in the future. So I think this will be a nice addition. I look forward to seeing this project completed.
I'll second it.
item's been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 35 is on a request from Holt Sales and Services LLC. Josh Holt is the officer to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to community mixed use, and to rezone the property located in the vicinity of 2,500 Dean Avenue from N3C4 neighborhood to limited RX2 mixed use to allow a non-necessary surface parking lot. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Joshua R. Holt, who's the Director of Finance, Holt Sales and Services LLC. This requires six votes. We'll ask first if there's any parties in interest who would like to speak, either the applicant themselves or anybody within 250 feet. Anybody? Seeing none, I'll ask for any germane comments from the general public. Anyone? Seeing none?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item 35A and B.
Is this, I saw in a comment, this was going to be used as retention basin? Is that correct?
It says to allow a non-necessary surface parking lot. Now, they may do some water retention on site, but I...
Okay. Motion carries.
Item 36 is on a request from Christian Life Assembly of God. Michael Hunsberger is the officer to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from low-medium density residential to public semi-public use and to rezone 9001 Fluor Drive from NX 2 Neighborhood Mix Use to P2 Public Civic and Institutional to allow for a newer, larger signage. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Michael Hunsberger, who's the Lead Pastor and Board Chairman of Christian Life Assembly of God, requires six votes. And again, we'll ask parties in interest, the applicant or anyone who lives within 250 feet, we'll ask, is the applicant here? All right. I'll ask if there's anyone who received notice within 250 feet, again, a party in Seeing none, I'll ask if there's any germane comments from the general public regarding this request from Christian Life Assembly of God. All right. Seeing none?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I will move item 36, 36A, and 36B.
I'll second it.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 37 is on a city-initiated request for properties generally located to the north of Vandelia Road between southeast 30th Street to the west and the city's corporate limits to the east to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from business park to industrial and to rezone the property from EX Mixed Use to I2 Industrial. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above parcels zoning to I2. One under that is a final consideration of the ordinance that above. The waiver is requested by Louis R. Hockenberg, who is counsel for Sam's Riverside Incorporated in Alvee Properties LLC, and by Aaron Olson Douglas Development Director. That requires six votes. Should we take these two separately, or can we do them both at once, Mr. Attorney?
My suggestion, Your Honor, would actually take them separately. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. So let's ask first, are the parties in interest either the applicant for the rezoning or those within 250 feet? Is the applicant present?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Louis Hockenberg, appearing on behalf of Sam's Riverside and Alvee, and we're requesting your approval of these agenda items. We've worked closely with staff and appreciate their cooperation in getting it to this point. We're glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have any quick? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Any other parties in interest? Seeing none, let's ask for any germane comments from the general public.
I guess I tried to read through both the items, and there's a lot of plots that were rezoning here, and I didn't really see what the purposes, like intended use of the rezoning is. I know in the last several meetings, we've had a lot of conversations about changing to different levels of industrial in the zoning, and so I was just wondering, like, I know there's some work with interchanges for the highway and that sort of stuff. I didn't know if that was related to this or what the purpose of the rezoning was for these projects.
Mr. Manager, did you want to make any comment, or anybody? All right.
Wait, do you guys know?
Well, it is, I suppose we could ask Mr. Hockenberg, would you want to make a comment as to what the use is going to be?
There are 18 properties involved. With regard to all but five of those, the use will be as now been in use for the last 25, 30 years or longer. There are properties that front on Vandelia Road, and these, some of these front on the new exchange and the new highway. And it just, this was done for the purpose of making sure the uses are consistent with the current use. On the five properties, there are some restrictions placed upon the use of those five properties, and they should be listed in the agenda. So in some cases, they cannot be used for salvage yards. In others, they can under certain conditions. No new salvage yards will be allowed in any of these properties.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have a motion on 37 and 37A.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't see any other public comments. First off, I'd like to thank our city staff. I appreciate Erin and her staff, and Scott in your department, really taking care of some of these issues that happened during our rezoning that we did, the Plan DSM, years ago. And so I appreciate, I appreciate getting this back to what the existing use would be. I will move 37A, one.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
And I will move 37B, one.
Okay. B is the first consideration of the ordinance for identified parcels rezoning to limited I2. One under that is a final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested again by Louis R. Hockenberg, who's counsel for Sam's Riverside Incorporated in Alvee Properties LLC, and by Aaron Olson Douglas, our development director, and requires, again, six votes. We'll go ahead and ask if there's anyone who'd like to make comment on this.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 37B, one.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Next item is item 38. Item 30 is on a request from De Oaks on Fluor LLC to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow future land use designation for property located at 3010 Fluor Drive and 3020 Fluor Drive from low-density residential to medium-density residential to rezone from N3A Neighborhood District to a limited NX1 Neighborhood District to allow the development of approximately 15 row home dwelling units. This item was continued from the March 21st, 2022 council meeting, requires a six-sevenths vote to approve the rezoning with conditions. I'll ask first if the parties in interest are here and would like to make any comment.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to talk about the new site plan and the setbacks that we've roughly revised here. Mr. Mayor, I know you had some concerns about the setback off of Fluor. This kind of shows a little bit more in detail. Can we zoom in at all on that a little more? Yeah, thank you. This kind of shows the proximity of the 45-inch oak tree. We've reduced the drives down to 14 feet instead of 16. We're able to get a 15-foot setback off of the retaining wall with this design. We have the 12-foot on Willamere with that three-unit building, and you can see we're pretty tight to the drives to the north of that three-unit building, getting into that tree. But this is, you know, what we've revised since the last meeting to kind of address the concerns with the frontage there on Fluor. Again, we're working with the engineering department on the retaining wall as well, and they've been great to work with. And I guess if anyone has any other questions for me concerning this project, I'm here to answer them.
Do we know roughly what the apartment complex to the north sits off of the street? I think it's a lot closer than the 15-feet setback, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Yep.
So you went from 12 to 15 back from that 5-foot retaining wall?
So we've... I'm 15 from the back of the retaining wall from 12.
Okay.
15 from 12. So I shortened the driveways up. I mean, I could continue to shorten the driveways up, but I would prefer not to, just because right now, I think 14, you can get a small car parked in there, couple of them. But I don't think we want to reduce the 20-foot main lane any more than what it is. So this is conforming for the zoning as this sits.
Adam, how far is that off the street then, including your 15 feet?
Um, I don't know how, the right-of-way might be 12, might be 12. I don't do a lot of, in the right-of-way, because that's your guys' space, but...
Isn't there an 8-foot sidewalk going in?
Is it an 8?
It's a 5.
It's 5?
5-foot sidewalk, probably 3. It's, yeah, it's probably 10, maybe 10 feet there. Yeah. To the...
Does anybody know?
I bet it's pretty close to 10.
So 10, then 5, then 15? Right.
10 and 15.
10 and 15. So it'd be 25 total?
It'd be 25 total.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's to the face of the building, right?
Yes. And there'll be private fence on the top of the wall along with a private sidewalk to the front doors above this wall. I haven't, you know, I'm working with the city. The 4-foot maximum allowable is all they can do, and they've been great to work with with respect to raising that wall up for their cost. I'm literally working right now to see if we need to go up higher than that 4 feet for the grade, but that'll be at my cost. And the engineering department have said they'll, they'll do the engineering on it. It'll just be my cost, and I've talked to the wall contractor as well. So it should be a pretty seamless transition there to, if I need to raise it up, you know, a foot to 18 inches, depending on the grade.
So the, these will be slab ungraded with a garage or something?
Yeah.
And then above that? So the slab will sit how far above the street?
Um...
I mean, it sets up the hill.
Yeah. We're going to scrape probably 16 to 18 inches off of the top of this, and I don't have those numbers on me right now. We have the whole site surveyed, and we have that number. But it's going to be probably, or 4 and 3, probably 7. I would say probably 7 and 1/2 feet above the curb, the garage slabs.
And then these eight units are going to be three stories?
Three-story units, yes.
So how tall at the top of the roof?
So the roof would probably be, oh, 918 and 9, probably 27, 27 feet to the roof line?
To the roof line, 27, and then plus the...
Plus the 7. So probably 34 to 37 feet above the curb.
Do you feel comfortable complying with the stormwater management condition?
Yeah, I just had a good meeting with Adam today. We have stormwater on the east side of Fluor, and there is a manhole out in front of Linda's house to the north. So we're working with engineering now to do a 15-inch storm in the right-of-way and then tying into the back of the intake to the north on the west side of Fluor, because there's an existing intake. If we want to zoom out a little bit, I don't know if I have, if I can see the parcels to the north. Oh, it's not on here, but there's an existing, a new intake just to the north of Kevin Lammers' property. And we're talking about going in the right-of-way with the storm intake or the storm sewer and getting under the wall prior to the wall being built, so we don't have to damage the wall for the storm. And then sanitary is on Willamere. But there's only, there's only one 15-inch on the west side. The storm runs on the east side, and then there's a crossway for the intake on the, on the west side. Then the only other intake is down on the other side of Willamere. So that, that west side of Fluor, it doesn't have many storm intakes.
Mayor, if I could, it's got an indication that's 15 feet of city right-of-way back of curb. So it'd be 15 of city and then 15 of you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So now we're at 30, right?
Yep.
So you're not on, with any of this wall or anything, you're not on city property? Is that correct?
Correct.
And the design standards, that was already addressed in your previous redesign, the condition number four?
Yeah. Yep. The, with the gabled roof and the shingled roof to look and feel like the neighborhood? Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's ask now if there's any questions from anyone else who's within that 250 feet and has received a notice. Step up, please.
Paula Noonan, Ward Three, 3,101 Fluor Drive. I have a question. May I address the builder?
Sure.
Okay. So just so I understand, from the back of the curb into the property line, the property's going to start at 30 feet inside from the back of the curb?
To the property line, I believe, is the retaining wall. So then it would start 15 feet behind the retaining wall, so 30 feet from the curb.
Can we get, can we get people on microphones, just so we have it on the record?
Aren't I?
You are. It's just that we're talking back and forth, and we can't hear. So if we could get the...
But his answer was these 30 feet from the curb.
From the curb. Okay. And so may I ask, is that in line with the adjacent properties?
Well, this is a different zoning, so it wouldn't be...
Well, it hasn't been conditionally rezoned yet, has it? Has that been passed?
That's what we're discussing.
Okay. So currently with the N3A zone, the houses are set back much farther, and so with NX1, wouldn't it still apply under NX1, what I'm reading in Chapter 135-9? It's saying that the structure should still be in line with adjacent properties.
Yeah, it's something that we will have to work through in the site planning process with the city of Des Moines, and Jason Van Essen has let me know that we're going to have to work to, on this setback during the site planning process.
And then in the redesign, because I wasn't privy to the redesign structure, is it still meeting the maximum height of just two stories in an NX1 zone according to Chapter 135?
It is not. It would probably go through a Type 2 design alternative through the planning and zoning on the height requirement for NX1.
Which would allow it to be what?
It'd allow the three-story building.
Okay. So, thank you.
Yes.
So what I'd like to discuss is that the council, if you are to pass the NX1 zoning, we are still heavily opposed to it, as is the Neighborhood Association, Grayslake Neighborhood Association, that you take into consideration that there is existing houses there. He is going to remove one house, one brick house, that is a historical home that's there to build these properties. And when he does that, that's going to leave two houses isolated between this new development and the apartment property that is just to the north. So those houses are going to be isolated, and if you have a building that's out farther than how they're terraced back, they're going to be blocked in and isolated, and it's going to make quite an impact to their air and their space. According to 135-9, it says the proposed development shall be designed and located within the property in such manner as not to unduly diminish or impair the use and enjoyment of adjoining property, and to this end shall minimize the adverse effects on such adjoining properties and impairment of light and air. I'd like you to heavily consider the impairment that is going to cause these other two homes as well as the structures across the street. If it is indeed a three-story structure, it will completely change our light and air space, and we will have to remedy our yards at great cost to us.
Party in interest within 30 feet or 250 feet or whatever? Yeah, come in.
Hello, Tony Gardner, 2118 Willamere Drive. So before I get started on why we're here today, I want to address Ms. Westergaard. The comments I made closing out the last meeting were made out of frustration and not indicative of the person that I am or the man that I choose to be. And as I told you on the phone, because my comments were made in a public forum, I wish to apologize to you in a public forum.
Thank you.
And I felt it, you know, I'm a work in progress. I'm constantly trying to better myself, and unfortunately, the only way to do that is to sometimes realize the errors of your way and attempt to right my wrongs and make changes to myself to ensure that doesn't happen again. So that's what I'm doing here, and all politics aside, just know that I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So I was frustrated because votes were cast based on politics and not real-world scenarios. This is a project I have adamantly been fighting for nine months, and we know the stats here. The residents have voted this down three times. Planning and zoning voted this down. We now have over 550 signatures in opposition of this, including a letter that went to each council member from the Grayslake Board. So hopefully you see the frustrations that are building here, because I feel like we are being silenced by our representative. And Indira, I read an interview earlier this year where you said about the council, and I quote, "With all the public input, with all of the attention that the Des Moines City Council was getting, they did not take any of our input. They listened to us, and then they did whatever they were already going to do." And that's when I realized people didn't have a voice in their government. You ran for council to speak for... You ran for council to speak for the people that, who felt their voice wasn't being heard. And to empower those who want to make a real change to the system. And regardless of race, the unfortunate reality is, is if you don't have a large pocketbook, it seems like you have no voice. And that is me. That's the five-hundred-and-fifty people who signed a petition to speak up. And our councilman has disregarded each of us. And I understand that there is a similar proposal in your ward. And if you want to support that, that's great. But if five-hundred-and-fifty of your constituents are against it, I hope you support them. On January tenth, twenty-twenty-two, during your swearing-in ceremony, your oath stated, "I swear to be a voice for the people and their needs when the people are otherwise silenced or ignored." Indira, I'm asking you to be my voice and oppose this development. Thank you.
All right, any other parties in interest? We'll ask now if there's any germane comments to be made by the general public in regard to this.
Hello, I'm Heather Armstrong. I'm part of Ward, Ward Two, thirty-seven, twenty-eight Hubble Avenue. I oppose of this, because one thing, how are people gonna afford a five-hundred-thousand-dollar property? That sounds like Grayslake, Illinois. That's a suburb of Chicago. That's not the wrong Grayslake. People in Iowa don't make two hun, they don't even make two-hundred-thousand dollars a year. This property sounds ridiculous. And I want you all to say no to it, because we could have had, like, low-income housing instead of something that's gonna cost residents that they cannot even get a loan on.
Taylor, this woman between, you had her hand up first, so I'd like to have her come up. Come in.
My name is Lucia Hale, and I live at thirty-eight oh five Southwest Fourteenth. I'm in the Grayslake, Grayslake Neighborhood Association. The question I have is when you're coming up Willamere, and you're going south on Fluor, that's an uphill grade, you're going to have, what do you call it, a retaining wall? Am I gonna be able, when I'm on Willamere, coming maybe from Brody to pick somebody up? Am I gonna be able to see going south, the way that traffic comes from Fluor Drive, to turn onto, from Willamere onto Fluor? That is a very busy, busy street. And I'm worried about your corner, your, your wall being up, and how far that's going to be. That's gonna create a problem for us coming, if I'm picking up a kid from Brody, and I'm coming up Willamere. That's gonna create one end of a problem if I turn and goes south.
We'll ask for our next speaker. Thank you.
Hello, Taylor Weber, Ward Three. Well, Scott Sanders makes almost two-hundred-thousand dollars, so there's that. Just so we're clear. Also, I think it's absolutely crazy that these people have to go to a ward representative that's not their rep to get any voice at all. That's really sad. I'm gonna speak to a couple incredibly valid issues on this project. We do need denser homes, the issue, if not in my neighborhood. There's actually tons of area, like, within a half a mile radius where this would fit better. And the reason I say that is because of what I've seen in stormwater over this fall and winter. There's already flooding with all the work that's being done. I understand we're saying up to city engineers' code, but we've proved that what city engineers already approved for the biggest stormwater management thing in history wasn't enough. And I did see in the planning and zoning meeting that no environmental study was required to be done for this project. So anything we say we're doing, I don't actually feel is addressing anything, because we haven't even studied what might actually need addressed, so.
My name's Natalie Harwood, I'm from Ward One. I want to elevate the voices of the people who are actual citizens who live in this neighborhood and not the developers. There are people who live here, and it sounds like over five-hundred of them are in opposition to this project. I think it's really crazy to have planning and zoning meetings where you have all these people show up and clamoring against it and then just not give a shit.
Any other speakers?
Hi, hello, Dave Berry, thirty-seventeen Park Plaza Drive. Member of Grayslake Neighborhood Association, board member. Here on behalf of the board, our president Heidi, I believe, sent you all a letter that we are opposing the project in support of our neighbors. And so we just wanted to make sure we had someone here representing Grayslake Neighborhood Association. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Do we have a motion here?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move item thirty-eight and thirty-eight A and thirty-eight B. Appreciate the, the comments. There has been a lot of public process on this particular project. It is, as Mr. Gardner noted, has been nine months of meetings. And, you know, I've spent time on the phone with neighbors. I've been at three different neighborhood meetings on this project. The question, and where I think there's maybe disagreement between myself and neighbors, not that I haven't heard and haven't tried to work through, through issues. This is a major corridor. Thirty-four thousand vehicles a day go through this corridor. Density is more appropriate on this corridor. And we've worked to address concerns. We've moved up the sidewalk on Willamere to address safety concerns. We've, there are conditions on this project. The secondary townhomes are limited to two stories. There are design requirements that have now been incorporated into this project to make the project more compatible with the neighborhood. And we've added a condition for stormwater requirements. So we have worked to address concerns that the neighbors have raised. I recognize that there is still disagreement with the project and still opposition to the project. But I think fundamentally, on a corridor like Fluor Drive, the density of this project is appropriate. And that's ultimately what this decision is about, is the land use and whether or not the density is appropriate at this location. And I think, I think it is. I think we need more density along additional corridors as well. So while there are other places where density is appropriate, I think we need to build density in those places as well. We need more housing in our communities. We need more housing of all types. I recognize that this is what's called missing middle from a form-based perspective. The goal is, there are multiple components to missing middle. And while this doesn't have the affordability component, this does have the form component. And we need to work towards the affordability component in projects going forward. So with that, I'll move item thirty-eight A and thirty-eight B. Thank you.
I'll second it. I would like to ask a couple of questions. I'd like to speak a little bit as well, but I did want to ask a couple of questions that were brought up by the public about the environmental study and about the sightlines. I wanted to know if we had any information on why the environmental study wasn't required, and if the sightlines are gonna exceed the standard that we, I know that we have standards for those sightlines at corners.
Mayor, if I could, I'm gonna ask Steve to come in on the environmental, and actually maybe Mike, because it'll come up in the next steps as well. But the site, the question about the site view, so the fifteen-foot wall that the city's gonna be responsible will have to be built such that there is appropriate sightlines for any traffic coming from the other angles. That's the easy answer now on the environmental, unless the developer's familiar of the next steps that would have to come into place, as he provides the full detail of the site plan.
There will be an environmental study, is what you're saying?
What, what's required, I'll let them.
Well, basically, the wall will be built, whether there's a project or not, because of the roadway we're doing, right? Because we're redoing Fluor?
Well, let's ask Scott, answer that question first, that's easy. Steve, the wall has to be built regardless because of the rest of the project, or not?
Our mayor, members of the city council, you know, the site plan will, will be submitted if this project moves forward, and that'll be details we looked at. But the wall is, is my understanding is to get the sidewalk in, and then obviously site, site distances would be analyzed in accordance with our, with our code and requirements with the, with the site plan supplemental, so.
And then the question about environmental?
Yes.
Mayor, county members of the council, Michael Ludwig, Deputy Director of Development Services. We don't specifically have a requirement in our code for an environmental study on each individual project. So those are just addressed by our normal development standards and our subdivision regulations. There's no known specific environmental issues on this site that we are aware of.
So I would like to, thank you for answering those questions. I would like to speak on this, especially since I was specifically addressed. I completely understand the feeling coming in here and feeling like you're screaming into a void or, or talking to a brick wall and being ignored. The quote that you brought up about saying that, like, we came to these meetings and we, people were doing what they were already going to do. I, first of all, was speaking about coming in and asking for social justice reform, racial justice reform, police, like, accountability, any, like, that whole, you know, huge range of topics during the protests in twenty-twenty. Not that that precludes that statement from being applied to this. However, I have to look at this, and I have to say, are we going to deny housing and density in our city in places where I, again, do believe that is, is appropriate? And I don't come in here with my mind made up. I don't want you guys to think that I'm not swayed by the arguments and by having a petition of five-hundred people, like, that is extremely convincing. What I have to do is I have to look at this and say, how are we going to get to a place where we are a city that has enough housing for everybody who's here? And, and I have made my comment about the price point of this. I think it's too high. I think that it could be lower. I know that the developer has projects that are at a lower price point. But that is something that I will be trying to influence moving forward. However, I don't think that we can say that this is not an appropriate place for this. I think that everywhere in our city, we're gonna have to be looking at things changing a little bit as we are growing. And I don't think that there's going to be anybody who's gonna be exempt from that. And if they come into my neighborhood and try to build townhomes and I'm opposing it, please call me out on that hypocrisy, because I don't intend to be hypocritical about this. I think that we have to build density, I think that we have to build density on corridors, and I want to live in a city that has density and that has the public transportation to match, and that has, you know, walkable areas and is not just single-family in, in places where it doesn't need to be. And so I have to come to this looking at, we need to build housing. I don't think it's the only solution, but we do need to build housing. We need to come up with these units, and we need density for a myriad of reasons. And so I have to support this project for those reasons.
No.
We can talk.
We'll ask everybody to vote, please.
You go first.
Your honor, that's six yes, one no, motion carries.
That completes our hearings and takes us now to item thirty-nine. Item thirty-nine is amending chapter one fourteen of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication Number twenty-two dash one fifty-nine. A, the code modification related to the addition of a pedestrian signal on Kiasakwa Way near Crocker Street, Oak Ridge Drive, and on Sixth Avenue between Crocker Street and School Street near Mercy College. B is a parking modification, accessible parking spaces on Eighteenth Street between Clark Street and College Avenue. C is parking modification, restrict parking on the corners of Southwest Twelfth Street at Bell Avenue. And D is a code correction, parking restriction on Hartford Avenue between Southeast Fifth Street and Southeast Sixth Street. Ask for council input or a motion.
I'll move thirty-nine A, B, C, D, in pursuant to forty-two A. I'll waive the second and third reading.
I'll second it. Your honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item forty is amending chapter one fourteen dash one and one fourteen dash six thirty-two relating to trailers and trailers on public streets. Council Communication Number twenty-two dash one fifty-eight. Ask for any council comment or a motion or both.
We, if there's, I would like to just have Sue Ann Donovan from zoning come in and talk about this. You know, this started out because we had semi-trailers hooked onto their cabs that park on a street that is residential for long periods of time. You know, they'd come in on a Friday and they leave it there. The Neighborhood Association said, wait a minute, how come they get to come in and do this on my, on my neighborhood? And it's, I've been working on this for like two years now, because it, it is deemed, the police said they couldn't do anything because it is a truck route, and truck routes can be parked there. But it's still a residential, one side of the street is all residential houses. The other side of the street is, I think it's DOT. I mean, it's not, it's not a business, it's not, it's not any, there's, there's, there's no way to park right there. So it was on the agenda for last month, and we pulled it off because it included, like, cube trucks and U-Haul trucks, and that was never the intention. So I sent in my questions over the weekend and said, I don't see anything about cabs on here. And so Sue Ann did call me today, but if you could just give us a little better explanation, I mean, it's still a residential neighborhood. You can't park a semi and a cab on a residential street, so why do we get to do it here? I'm just a little confused.
Sure. Mayor, members of council, Sue Ann Donovan, Neighborhood Services Deputy Director. The street that you're talking about is a truck route, and it does have parking allowed on the street. So right now, they can park the truck and the trailer, because it's a truck route with open parking on the street. What I want to do is look at ways to maybe tie it back to companies. Now, you say they're not attached to companies. We need to do research to see where they're coming from, and see if we can do some twenty-four-hour parking tickets if they're parked there over the weekend, because they still, they have to move them every twenty-four hours regardless. And if that doesn't work, come back and talk about an ordinance that's, that includes cabs and trailers not being parked on streets in the city. and talk about an ordinance that includes cabs and trailers not being parked on streets in the city of Des Moines. That would keep them off of that street, but we'd have to do it citywide. I think we need to do a little more research and see if there's some other options first, and then come back to you with some solutions.
I guess I don't know what the options would be. You know, somebody drives a semi, and I've got tons of pictures. I mean, every time I go by, I take pictures. I take pictures of the, of the signs on the trucks, so everybody knows, you know, what these trucks are doing. We can't, you can't park a car all weekend on a street. Why do you get to park a semi all weekend?
Yep, we're going to have to work with PD and our weekend parking enforcement team and make a concentrated effort to look at that, that road and see what we can figure out, and then start trying to track some of those trucks back to the companies, and see if there's some creative ways we can get people incentivized not to park on the street before we do an ordinance that bans them outright.
So are we going to amend chapter 114-1 and 114-632 tonight that would ban just trailers on the street?
Correct. This would ban trailers that are unattached, campers that are unattached, except for if the trailer was there for construction. So, for instance, if I, when I got the roof put on my house, they parked the trailer during the day and drove the truck to do errands, and then picked it up at the end of the day. So it was left unattended while it was in, in use for the construction, but then they moved it every night, as they should have. They shouldn't have left it parked on the street.
And I'm not concerned about somebody who wants to, you know, bring their trailer home for scrub day, and they park it on the street. I'm only concerned about these massive semis. I don't know, are they twelve, I don't know, but they've got, you know, they're, they're semis, what you see on the, on the highway.
Correct, but there are other areas of town where there are other, were other concerns where people were parking trailers unattended as part of an illegal home occupation. We've had campers that we've gotten complaints about parked on the street, not attracted to a tow truck, actually having electricity run across the front yard, and they're living in them in the street. We needed to stop those type of things also. So, yeah, this is a first step. This is to, an attempt to get, you know, get rid of some of those issues in our neighborhoods, knowing that you have a larger issue that we need to look at.
So, if, I can't unhook my cab, but if I want to park there, I just have to put my cab, hook it onto the trailer, and then it's completely legal?
At this point, yes, but it has to move every 24 hours. So we have to get some parking enforcement with PD and us on weekend parking to start issuing some tickets to see if that will solve that problem.
But that's only legal on truck routes?
On truck routes, yes. Another part of the ordinance is that on city streets, you can't drive a truck of, I don't know, there's some weight limit. And so we have been able to get rid of semis in our neighborhoods, because they aren't even supposed to be on the street, and we tell them, you can't even be in this neighborhood, so you need to, to get out of here. You can't park your semi in a neighborhood that you can't travel in, obviously.
Can I park just my cab on a city street then?
Not if it's over the weight limit.
Just the cab?
Mm-hmm.
Because I know we've got another one that I've turned into zoning, where he unhooks his trailer, and he parks his cab right there in the front yard every weekend.
Well, I'm not aware of that, but I'll circle back with the staff and see what they're doing with that one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We'll do, we are going to do more research. This isn't the last of this, but this is the first of it.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Sue Ann, if we approve this, if we vote this, this is just a first step. There's...
Yeah, we're going to research more of Linda's issue in some of the industrial areas that, that have semis parking on streets, and essentially using our streets as a parking lot. What do we want to do with that? How do we want to address it? So, we felt like this was a first step. This addressed a lot of the other issues in the neighborhoods. So if we can get this done, that'll help us greatly with those issues, but we understand that council member Westergaard has those problems that are slightly different, because it's more of an industrial slash residential, and it has a truck route. So it makes it a little more complicated.
And I, but I, see, I've always been concerned. I don't know why that's a truck route, because it just goes to a residential. I mean, if I'm a truck route, I can go around and get into the, into the industrial area. I don't, I, you know, I pose that to traffic and transportation. I don't know why it's a, why it's a truck route.
We can certainly, I'll certainly work with traffic and transportation on that.
Ms. Mayor? Yeah, I would say, councilwoman Westergaard, we, we can discuss this aside if you wouldn't mind, and then we can get some options brought back. Thank you.
It's just, we've been working on it for two years.
So, I know I've had many complaints about this, so I appreciate you bringing this forward. I understand Linda's concern. So if we waive the second and third reading, you'll still come back to us with a change that, that Linda's asking for, or councilwoman Westergaard?
Yeah. I would like to do some more research and then come back with some options for you.
You think within 60 days or something like that? Maybe we can come up or less?
Yeah, 60, 90.
Okay. I will, I'll make the motion to number 40, and I'll waive the second and third reading pursuant to rule 42A.
I'll second it. Thanks, Sue Ann.
You're welcome. Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 41 is a request from Reeder Farms Inc. to demolish...
Oh, what happened?
The independent order of the Oddfellows Hall at 576AKA Fairgrounds Hardware Building associated with 2951 East Walnut Street pursuant to section 58-70 of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. We are asked to choose alternative A or B. Council communication number 22-161. A is to determine that the application for demolition of the building shall be referred to the Landmark Review Board, or B, to determine that the application of the building shall not be referred to the Landmark Review Board. I have conferred with our city legal, and we will open this up for anyone to make appropriate comments on this, up to 10 minutes, one minute per person. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dan Manning, Jr. I'm an attorney with the Littlest O'Malley Firm in Des Moines, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300, Des Moines, Iowa, representing Reeder Farms, the owner of the property. We received a staff report today that recommended that this not be referred to the Landmark Review Board. We agree with the staff recommendation, and would ask that the council adopt the staff recommendation. The recommendation also, you know, tells us there are a few things that we have to do. We have to stay in touch with the Development Services Committee, which is, you know, totally fine with us. We have to take photos of the interior and exterior, and we also have to try to salvage as many of the fixtures in the building as possible. All those things are totally agreeable, and so we just ask that you adopt the...
All right. Anyone else to speak?
Pat Miners, 411555 in Des Moines. And I've been watching this building for many years. I'm in favor of historic preservation, and I am in favor of moving this to, or sending it to, the Landmark Review Committee. You've probably all received my emails documenting a lot of history of the building, and why we believe that it should remain. I think the, the reports about it being in such bad condition are highly exaggerated. There is a large repair on the East 30th Street side, and why'd they repair that if the building was in such bad condition? Why did they give it a building permit four years ago if it was in such bad condition? It's not in that bad a condition. Had the, there's a little question whether the damage was due to vandalism or a car wreck. I've heard a couple different things. But if the damage, which was low, almost, probably my level, five feet.
We'll ask for the next speaker. Taylor?
Taylor Weber, Ward 3. I don't, I guess I don't really see a downside to reviewing it, you know, like, if it's a historical building, what's the downside of sending it there, especially with the history of the city as it addresses nuisance properties and the determination of those, and how they've poorly handled those currently and in the past. I would disagree with staff's recommendation then, and see why not send it to a landmark review board. We're all about preserving our history of Des Moines. We've read proclamations for 100-year-old businesses, so why not keep going and make sure we're retaining buildings that are landmarks?
Garland Armstrong, Ward 2, and I was, since me and my wife are former CMAP Housing Committee, just would like to know for this, how many years has it been on this part, and is it in, going to be, what? Yeah, if you need some help about that, you need to contact the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plan. They can help you with this part, because they would like to know how many years it's been on there, and then they could definitely see if it is landmark status or not, because they can really help you dig deep and see what the problem is. And if you feel like you need the number, I have it right there, and I can give it to you anytime, whenever you want to. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mike, I know that you and probably Sue Ann have taken a look at this building. I actually went over there today and walked around it. Seems like there have been some problems, and it looks like maybe there's quite a number more that need to be either dealt with, or, and I can see that the, the owner hasn't had a use for it, and it's been empty for, I don't know, what, since '17 or something?
Mayor, county members of the council, Michael Ludwig, deputy director of development services. Yeah, about last summer, there was an issue on the 30th Street facade of the building. There were some bricks that blew out of the side of the building onto the sidewalk. That was what caused some of the public nuisance action on the property. They did do an emergency repair on the, on the 30th Street side of that building. That cost approximately $30,000 to repair about 25 lineal feet of building facade along the, on 30th Street. That's about 5% or 10% of the entire building, linear feet of building facade on the building, so it's about between 5% and 10% of the building facade was repaired for $30,000. We contacted the applicant today to see if they've had any estimate on the repairs. He indicated that they had had a contractor out. The contractor asked for a structural engineer to come out and look at the building. Structural engineer refused to give them a bid on, on the repair of the building. Based on not having any other numbers and just that $30,000 figure for that 25 lineal feet of repair, we're estimating somewhere between $400,000 and $600,000 to repair the exterior facades of the building. That doesn't touch the inside of the building and any repairs that are needed in there. The only other comment that I would just share is, we did have to send staff out this morning, NID staff, and our deputy building official went out there, and Sue Donovan is here. She has some photos from that inspection, but just know that we did, the city did order fencing to be installed on the west side, which is the parking lot side of the building, and the north side, which is the Walnut Street frontage on that, because what is, what we believe is happening from our deputy building official is that water's getting in behind the bricks, and then it, when it rains, and then it's freezing, and that freeze thaw is causing the bricks to heave out the side of the building. And so the crack that is on the west side of the building has noticeably, has gotten more substantial over the last two weeks. And so that, combined with additional projection of those bricks pushing out of the building, caused us to have to put fencing around that today. So we either need to decide whether we're making a decision on landmark and get it restored, or basically get it down because of the, and Sue can comment on those photos and that inspection this morning.
Thanks, Molly.
Yep.
Sue Ann, any updates?
Mayor and council, if you want to see pictures, I can show them to you. We, we did find that there was more significant damage starting to happen. Bricks were pulling away. The facade is pulling away. We believe it should go down as soon as possible, so that we don't have any catastrophic failure that would land on the sidewalk or streets, which is why we fenced it off to make sure that the residents are safe from any building collapse.
Sue, there were photos in the pack that showed the exterior building, but this is the area.
Right there, yeah.
The bricks are starting to push out on the building.
Mr. Mayor, I was, also was out there today. I think council member Bozen had also went out there today. There is significant damage to the building, and I, you know, I respect the lady that had came up here and said she'd been watching the building for so many years. I wish that, I wish that we would have invested in the building for, for that many years that we've been watching it, because now, now we're at a point in time where someone could actually get hurt or die. And that's my biggest concern with this building, that now we've went out and fenced it. You know, it's a public safety hazard, not only a public nuisance. And this is, this has been on residents of the fairgrounds' radar, and Sue Ann and I have had this discussion many times about this building, and, and no one has stepped up and wanted to invest in this building, or save this building, or, or do anything, until now it's time to make a decision, okay, now we've either got to take it down, or someone needs to invest in it. Well, now it's, it's, it's long gone, and it's going to take a significant investment, and economically, I'm not even sure if you invest the amount of money it's going to take to restore this building, who's going to be able to pay rent in that building for what you've got invested in it? So now we're at the point where, okay, we've watched the building, but we watched it deteriorate, and that, and I struggle with that, that, you know, this, you know, it's a safety hazard. So unfortunately, you know, and I don't like to do this, but I mean, we need to, we need to take immediate action on this. This cannot go another 90 days. Absolutely not. This has sat since 2018 vacant, and you said that you've been watching it for years. I wish that we would have done something while we were watching it, instead of watching it deteriorate. So I'm going to move 41B.
I'll second that. Also, I did go out, only because I used to frequent the Fairground Hardware. I'm in that area a lot, and the difference between where the wall was when I went by, when we first had this on our agenda, to where it is today, was striking how far it had moved out. I love to restore, I mean, I was, been in the East Village, I've been all around, but I think in this case, this is why we need some type of a maintenance code, so buildings do not get to this state, and that we have some way to say we need to shore up buildings, not at the end, but all the way along. And everyone hates to tear down anything old, but in this case, the, and the reason they got fixed so quickly, I think it was because it was right before the fair, and the bricks were falling on the sidewalk, and that's where it was a bus, you know, pickup, so they had to get it fixed, so they didn't even have an option, because of the danger of all the people that were walking by. Again, so I would move and support that we need to do something quickly.
I had a question, because what was, what would be required if we were to have it go to the board? Would be like, either pictures of the interior and exterior salvage. Is there any possibility or intention for that in this demolition process without waiting that 90 days?
Members of the council, essentially, if it gets referred to... Members of the council, essentially if it gets referred to the landmark review board, then they could look at it for landmark sass. That doesn't mean that the building still could not be torn down. It doesn't prevent that. It just basically adds additional process for consideration of a demolition, which is essentially what we're considering tonight. The, if the council takes no action to refer it to the landmark review board, they still have to submit a salvage plan to staff for review. So we would look at if there's any materials in that building that could be salvaged in the past. Oftentimes those salvage materials have gone to the architectural salvage business here in town for use on other buildings. And so they are required to document the existing provisions, existing features in the building, meet with staff, and then we discuss what can be salvaged before we issue the permit. So there's not a permit issued immediately tonight or anything of that sort. They still have to submit documentation for staff review for salvage of materials from the building.
So that's just, it's a quicker process to get it down if we don't refer it to the board?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the one thing too, if I can ask Mr. Mike, there is nobody showing interest. The current owner has, has shown no interest to put the money into it. So even if landmark review had said, oh, it's, we, they still have the right not to do anything, right?
Yeah. So they, the, in the, what, three months, three weeks, a month since this, the application was filed for the utility disconnect? We've had, I believe, three parties that contacted us. We forwarded them to the applicant. Nobody's come back to staff with any kind of a proposal or even concept for reuse of the building and any indication that they're pursuing different financing resources to try and save this building. So at this point, nothing's been presented as an option. We, please do not take this wrong. Staff fully believes, I mean, from an age standpoint and from a history standpoint, it meets the criteria for, you know, being sent to landmark. It's the current condition of the building that's a concern in our standpoint.
Okay. And in that same time period, it has further deteriorated? Is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, just in the last two weeks, our inspector said this morning, the deputy building official told me today that just in the last two weeks, the crack on the parking lot side of the building has grown substantially.
Like three inches.
And we're expecting more rain, more freeze thaw still this spring.
Okay.
I'll make one quick statement about the last two, three weeks.
You've made your statement and we thank you for your input, but is there anyone else out here would like to make a statement? Okay, we've got voting in process?
Your Honor, that's seven, yes. Motion carries.
We're to the portion of our meeting this evening where we're going to have our public speakers. And so for those individuals tonight wishing to speak under this item, we will only be calling on those who have registered to speak. All speakers must comply with the rules regarding their names and addresses or they will not be recognized. There's 12 speakers, I believe, this evening. Speakers this evening will receive up to two minutes each to make their comments and we ask you to keep your own time because at the end of the two minutes, the clerk will announce time. And the speaker's mic will be closed and we'll move immediately the next speaker and we'll ask that nobody come to the mic till your name is called. We want to hear from all of our residents and we will encourage residents to be respectful of others' viewpoints that are different from their own. While you may certainly disagree with that viewpoint, I want to remind everyone that the council's rules provide that any comments that are slanderous will result in speaker being barred from further comment. As presiding officer, I'll determine whether the comments are slanderous or not. Fair warning, arguing about that determination in any manner is not permitted in doing so will be considered disruptive and result in the speaker being barred from further comment and being barred and asked to leave the building. Prior to starting, I want to make a quick comment and obviously I'm not sure what everybody's comments are going to be this evening, but we're going to begin the public comment here tonight, this meeting and hear from our residents who have requested to speak. And before those comments, I want to address an issue of public safety. As mayor, I share in the community's interest to strengthen the Des Moines Police Department's operations and policies while maintaining the public safety of our residents and what they expect and what they deserve. And that's why I'm directing in agreement, I think, with our, majority of our council that the, to direct the city manager to schedule a city council work session no later than next month to address two key issues that we believe could assist our police department and better, to better serve the Des Moines neighbors and residents. First, consideration of the independent third-party consultant who can review the Des Moines Police Department's policies, training, and principles with the goal of attaining national accreditation. Secondly, a, is a consideration of transforming the community policing and code enforcement policy and practice review committee to bring that to a new, at least consider a separate board or commission to do so. And I look forward to our work session and believe it will be a significant step in addressing our policing and public safety. So, Mr. Manager, we look for you to help us pull those together as quickly as we can. Let's begin this evening and our first speaker this evening is Taylor Weber.
Taylor Weber.
Appreciate that, Frank. Super late and sounds like you're planning to think about doing something, which would be cool if we actually did something. A couple of things that I want to hit on in the news, I kind of flustered from that, that's interesting. EMC Insurance on the park they're making downtown, they're pulling out from making any stairway that would attach to the Skywalk. We're still paying them the same amount of rent. They're still providing private security, but they claim that that's too expensive. Interesting, there would be room for a public restroom now, but they're not going to pay for that either. Interesting, you bring up DMPP. There's a thing that we should cancel over the summer, if that's how we feel as a council about it, where we're incentivizing female officers to join the force amid sexual assault and harassment allegations that are very well-founded and we have not yet addressed in any capacity. So maybe we should cancel that event if we're planning on thinking about doing something about something. And then again, addressing probably what you're trying to get in front of, there's some really troubling video that yet again was released. This is like the third meeting in a row where we've had to say that. Again, no comments about any actual real action from any of you, even those that have promised changes on the campaign trail. And you're continuing to raise police budgets, meeting after meeting. I don't want a police department with an accreditation in violence. That's all it is. It's just going to continue oppressing our community. And Frank, that's like a really empty gesture on your way out and I get it, you're trying to do that. But for people that are trying to stick around for a lot longer, I would suggest that you look at taking real action and holding the police department accountable and fire Scott Sanders and fire Dana Winger and actually do something that does some public good.
Adam Kellin.
Hello, my name is Adam Kellin. I live in Ward 3. I use he/him pronouns and I'm going to, I have one thing planned, but now I have to make up other stuff on the spot because this was not on the agenda, that whatever the mayor just brought up about DMPP getting a national accreditation, maybe. It's bizarre. And I also just wanted to point out, in January, there was a lot of fuss, there was a lot of controversy because council passed rules to make it so you can no longer do a lot of different things as one council member or one person, which the public was pretty aware was also retaliated against in Deera. And we just saw that because one of those rules said that you can't bring stuff up that isn't on the agenda until the end of the meeting and you need to have a second and you have to go through a process. The mayor just didn't do the rule that was just passed. It's not surprising, but I just wanted to point that out because it again shows that the rules are a joke and get skipped over whenever they want, especially if it helps DMPP and/or the mayor. Statement on George Flag. The city of Des Moines will soon begin plans to make major alterations to George Flag Parkway. The road grade will be raised several feet above the flood plain. Part of the road will also be realigned to connect to Southwest 30th Street to avoid flooding and its heavily used truck route. The investment of millions of taxpayer dollars into this project should not happen without a conversation on the road's current namesake, George Flag. Let's see, after he was retiring, they decided to kind of surprise everybody and announced it as like a surprise that public input to change the name to George Flag, even though his tenure on council was riddled with the well-known fact that he was xenophobic and he would deny liquor license to any business with an ethnic sounding name. That's his own words. He admitted that to the register. And at one point, he suspected that a fake business owner was operating under a fake ID. ICE was called on this business, causing the owner and multiple patrons to be detained. And in 2001, Flag even voted against the city ordinance that outlawed discrimination in housing, employment, and use of public accommodations based on sexual orientation. Despite all these hateful actions, he was honored anyway with the name George Flag Parkway, previously Valley Drive. The council needs to reconsider the name, change the name, and take public input on what the new name should be.
James Grimm. James Grimm. Natalie Hartwood.
I also want to echo that I think it's pretty outrageous that this is thrown in right before public speaking time, where even if we had done it earlier in the meeting, we would have had a moment to write some stuff down and respond to this. But consulting firms are super bullshit and just a good way to throw a bunch of money at some PMCs and then not actually make any changes. So the actual justice advocates know that that is not something that's actually going to make a difference for the people on the street and the people who are suffering. That is something to do to make yourself feel better. And also, I also want to express concerns about the DMPP program for young girls, especially considering that I have a daughter and the sexual harassment allegations that are going on. It's a huge issue and I really wish you would address that instead of throwing this at the end. Again, it does violate the rules that you made that said you can't add things to the agenda. Here's the comment I was going to make originally. As a city, over and over, I see us awarding subsidies to companies and developers, sometimes to places like Merge in the Drake Neighborhood, that have directly told taxpayers they don't need and didn't ask for. Linda has said in reference to along the fertilizer plan to move in by the airport that we have to either raise taxes or raise revenue, yet somehow this concern disappears when it comes to giving Tiff money to developers. What if we spent less on corporate subsidies in the first place? And even more importantly, what if we as a city actually held the companies that make us vague promises of affordable housing and jobs accountable? If we can do this by passing a taxpayer protection act or a clawback ordinance, this would mean that if we give a developer or companies our communities tax dollars because they promise jobs, housing, or other investments, and they don't fulfill their end of the bargain, we get our money back. Many other Midwest cities such as Chicago have implemented clawback ordinances since 2020 and before. Going through the meeting agendas, I noticed time and time again, there's zero enforcement mechanisms or follow-up for audit for promises that are made by those companies to the people. For instance, Genesis Health Club was supposed to be, supposedly going to invest money for underserved youth for their zoning exemptions, but there's no requirement that they prove that and there's no proof that they've done that at all. And hidden in the fine print, their donation came in the form of membership discounts to their own clubs. Why would a company ever follow through on a promise to Des Moines' vulnerable citizens when they can lie and say they did it for free?
Harvey Harrison.
My name is Harvey Harrison. I live at 680 Harwood, Des Moines, Iowa. I'm a member of the CCI Racial Justice Team and the founder of Just Voices. Last week, you got to see two more examples of excessive use of force by the Des Moines Police Department. On Wednesday, Just Voices sent a packet to all of you that included a video of a second incident that occurred on early morning of May 31st of 2020. It shows an atrocity committed by sworn officers of our police department against an elderly man on the streets of Des Moines by the use of pepper spray without any justification. I trust that you all read the materials and looked at the video. On Thursday, Iowa CCI held a press conference and released a video of a Des Moines police officer, Button, stopping his vehicle, initiating a use-of-force incident without any justification, chasing down and violently throwing down a black man with a known mental disability and then beating him into submission. Another atrocity. I appreciate the response by Councilperson Bozen who called me indicating she was going to raise this. I am utterly disappointed in your actions, Mr. Mayor. It simply smells as everything in the past has of kicking it down the road and doing nothing. I encourage all of you to review the model of how to conduct an after-action review, which is published by the U.S. Department of Justice. Finally, I want to remind you that the demand that we have made is not about an investigation. It is about the need for systemic reforms in how policing is conducted in our city. The investigation is needed only because Dana Wingard has failed to order his officers to stop the atrocities. Now, if he were to make that order in the first place, and we started this five or six years ago now, we wouldn't be here now asking for this or the investigation. None would have been necessary.
The fact that he has not done this in any fashion means that we need the investigation and we need it now.
Bridget, Bridget Peterson. Bridget Peterson. Laurel Clinton.
Laurel Clinton, Des Moines resident, CCI member, Racial Justice Team member. We all know the definition of insanity by now, right? Mayor, Council, it took you less than 30 days to suspend contact with our Russian sister city when they attacked Ukraine. But we show up here, month after month, year after year, talking about what's happening in our community, the humanitarian crises that our police department is allowed to inflict on our residents. That's another form of insanity. So I know you have the ability to act quickly when it reflects you, Mayor County, because you spoke on it tonight. You didn't put what we asked on the agenda because I would have loved to have heard what you guys thought of what we were asking about. We're not asking for the chief to go away and be fired because we don't like him. We don't like his tactics and the way he perpetuates the culture against certain sectors in our community. That's the reason we want him gone. Speed of the leader, speed of the group. We're asking for accountability, an actual citizens' review board to address some of these issues that come out of our police department. We're asking for a third-party investigation, not to get accreditation, but to actually clean up our police force. If we want, if we want public safety for all, that has to include, that has to include the brutality that comes out of our police department through, for, about certain people in our community. It's allowed. I have mentally defect people in my family. I live four blocks away from that when that happened. If you have people in your family, imagine that that was your child.
Jean O'Donnell.
Good evening. My name is Jean O'Donnell. I'm a resident of Ward 3 and a member of the Iowa CCI Racial Justice Team. I hope you all have viewed the recently released video of a Des Moines police officer beating an intellectually challenged black member of our community and the public comment Chief Wingard made in response. The chief has again done his job of reassuring people like me that brutality by the police is our only choice in responding to people who do not have what they need to thrive because we have decided as a society that we prefer a culture of punishment to one of care. I hope, I hope you all felt the same revulsion I felt when you saw what happened in that video. I think it's useful, especially if you are a white person, to think about the discomfort you experienced watching it. And then, more importantly, reflect on what you did with that discomfort. Did you search for a reason to justify the officer's actions? Chief Wingard, in his statement regarding the video, provided us conveniently with a justification. He stated Officer Button, and this is a He stated, Officer Button, and this is a quote, "had no choice but to intervene with Mr. Woods for the safety of Mr. Woods and the public. Dog whistle, be afraid, be very, very afraid." Really? No choice? What actual evidence do we have, other than the word of someone who belongs to an organization that uses its money and power to lobby our elected officials to pass laws that protect them from accountability? I do not trust what they say, and that makes me feel unsafe. I ask you to continue to build on your efforts towards building a community based on care for one another. More money needs to go to investments in people's well-being, and less to maintaining an oppressive system of violence and incarceration that has a disproportionate impact on our Black and Brown neighbors.
Brad Titus, Des Moines voter, property taxpayer, CCI racial justice team member. Accreditation is welcome. It is not, absolutely not, a substitute for our demand for an independent third-party investigation of the ongoing unacceptable behaviors of the Des Moines City Police Department. We need a citizen review board. We need change of leadership. We continue to see and experience a persistent, unaddressed pattern and practice of antiquated, unsafe, unprofessional, disproportionate, abusive policing strategies, approaches, tactics, behaviors by multiple DMPD officers and leadership team members. We continue to see and experience those in power preying on, rather than protecting people that are different from and more vulnerable than themselves. People of color, especially young black men, women, and those lacking in social economic resources. We continue to see and experience disproportionate stops, charges, pleas, resistance to transparency and accountability, resistance to appropriate training, failure to effectively address mental health challenges on the street and within the department. We continue to see and experience the results of a DMPD culture that presents as a testosterone-challenged, fearful, occupying force. Caused by inappropriate hiring, insufficient and inappropriate policies, practices, and training, resulting in members of our community not being safe, decreased officer safety and respect, lawsuits, settlements, judgments, dismissed charges, and wasted tax dollars. There are more successful models and resources available to help. It is time to stop the white splaining. It is time to stop putting lipstick on the problem. It is time.
I am Jolene Prescott, and I live at 301, 3 Third, no, I live at 301 33rd Street in Des Moines. And I don't really have a problem giving my address, but I know some of the people here do, and there is a reason for it. They are afraid of retaliation from others in the public, and I do understand that. But if you think about it, what's to keep those same people from coming up here? You know what it is? It's our checkpoint down here, and it's our police officers here. They are here to protect not only the people up front here, they're here to protect everybody in this room, and we need to respect that. Because I've heard criticism of the police being here, I've heard criticism of the checkpoint down there, and they are here for all of us. Now, if I should have a problem with somebody out in the community, you know, they should take my address and do something, I know that I can call on the police to help me with that. And you know what? I am speaking, shut up. And I, I just want to see, you know, is our police, police perfect? No. But I really think they're trying their hardest. And I, I do, and we need them. Do they need some reform? Yes. But we need them. And I, as far as I'm concerned, I want the police to stay here, because I don't feel safe here. I am completely outnumbered, so don't ever reduce the number of police that are back there. Thank you.
Noah Notch.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 42A through L, receiving file.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All?
Mayor, can I ask a question, just on, since I had submitted for the next agenda? When you say we're going to do a work session, at what point is that work session in May? Can I get clarification?
Yes, in the month of May, we should be able to get that scheduled.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? This meeting is adjourned. I want to thank everybody for attending.